Meeting is called order. We have a group of scouts here tonight who are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So I'll let you get yourselves where you want to be and we'll do that.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I need a roll call to determine if we've got it formed.
Alder Ronfru, Ronfru?
Here.
Alder Karen Tepley?
Here.
Alder Tom McCarthy?
Here.
Alder Rachel Schultz?
Here.
Mayor Todd Pavino?
Here.
Alder Melanie Walters?
Here.
Alder Doug Martinick?
Here.
Alder Steve Downs?
Here.
Alder Ryan Cairns?
Here.
We have a forum.
All right. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes, the meeting was properly noticed on Friday, October 31st, and the amended agenda was issued and properly noticed at approximately 2:30 PM yesterday, Monday, November 3rd.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Once the council's had a few minutes to review that, entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion from old person Tepley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs. Any discussion on tonight's agenda? Hearing on all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. The agenda is approved. Next up, approval of the minutes. Again, once the councils had a few minutes to review those, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved in minutes.
We need to make note in the minutes, what do we need to point out here, Mr. Wendell?
So the ordinance that was passed last month referenced INE Development LLC. That needs to be corrected to INE Properties LLC, and that change will be reflected in the final agreement.
Okay, therefore we're approving in the minutes. And we need to state that the ordinance approved last month, which listed, how was it phrased?
INE Development LLC.
It needs to be changed to?
INE Properties LLC.
And that will be reflected in the developer's agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so that needs to be in the motion.
Motion approved in minutes.
Okay, motion for Mr. Downs. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Martinick. Discussion of the minutes. Hearing on all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Minutes approved. Next up, city and utility. Department had reports and concerns. Where's the microphone at? Let's start with Mr. Glassburner.
Okay, on the economic development front, we continue to work on projects underneath the community project funding at 2.5 million. Those projects include housing subdivision, a high drive improvement, and a potential Jefferson Street project improvement. We continue to work on Panorama Estates closely with the developer there. We continue to work towards a development agreement, which should be finalized this week, Historic Field, Cobblestone Hotels. We continue to work with them towards a development agreement and assisting them in locating investors for the project. We continue to work CDI grants, which are Community Development Investment Grant. We did have a release of roughly $113,000, a $230,000 grant for a current project with Wild Money Collective. Darcy's working in conjunction with Ashley on a Simons Planning Grant. They had a kickoff meeting today with a bunch of key parties. There was, there's also a regional GIS planning grant for, that one's for $34,000 that Darcy's assisting, and that would increase collaboration between the city and the county around GIS mapping. In Public Works, we've, we're working hard to kind of transition in our season, so the mowing is at this point complete. There's been a very big push on brush cleaning and pruning trees up in the park, and I think if people are spending time out there, they're probably noticing a big difference. A lot of the lower branches on trees have to be pruned up in order so that we can conduct state mowing operations. We also are working on winterizing all the water lines that extend through our parks and cemetery and the airport. In the streets, they're doing leaf removal. They're out every day, leaf backing. We did just have a dike maintenance inspection with Beer Vicker Engineering, which is a yearly occurrence, and they will create a list of things that we need to do in order to make sure that our dike remains in, you know, a very high functioning level. They're always working on the maintenance of our kind of landfill area with remove, taking brush from the lower part up into the upper area where we then burn a lot of the brush. We are also involved in a street rating process that's required by the state. We've spent a day with MSA Engineering. There's still more to come where we drive every street in the city and we apply a rating to it, and then that will help us manage the conditions of the streets better in the future. And then Jason has been working diligently on concrete repairs of sidewalk and curb, so.
Thank you, Jason. Put it over. Yeah, let's go with Stacy's. He was going on down at the library.
We continue to have a vacancy on the library board for a city resident. We had a couple of close dates in October to allow for staff development, thanks to RCPD to, for coming out to do a couple of basic safety trainings for us, and we also had some building maintenance done during those days. So thanks to the public for their patience during those closure dates. We have another close day next Tuesday, November 11th, for the Veterans Day holiday. And I would just mention that we have an after-school program on early release days for Richland Center District. Wednesdays, we have craft cart activities and snacks available for kids that afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Gold.
Good evening. On the water side from the utility, completed the winter hydrant maintenance. The park cemetery seasonal meters have all been taken out. Reminder that Steve had to be, to the public that winter's coming. Every year we get called out for broken pipes in basements, so please make sure, broken windows in the basement, your heat, everything is set for winter because unfortunately, it seems like every year we're out for one or two homes that pipes do break. They continue to work on AMI metering changeouts, which will help flag us if there is large leaks with daily reports instead of monthly reports with those meters. So, once we get them all in, we'll be able to monitor the usage a lot better on the water side. Looking at budgeting and then projects for next year in the water, the two that we're kind of looking at is Valley View, Pipe Bursting, or Cairns Avenue. So those are the two that we're talking about. Wastewater, if you're by North Park, you'll see the new horse made. The reason we did that was the pipe was exposed in the Pine River. They'll be tying in, not tomorrow, but Thursday probably, just north of Eighth Street, and then we'll hook up at the lift station north of North Park there. Same thing there, working on budget, and their folks are helping the water with AMI install. On the electric, we just completed 200 pole inspections. We outsourced that. Had 16 poles that need attention in the next year and a half. AMI metering will be transitioning into tree trimming, and we do have all of our underground services at this point that we need to get done are completed. I will be attending, when we talk about GIS, me and Ashley have been talking how we can streamline that going forward for the utility and the city. WPPI has added two GIS specialists, and we'll be attending a forum tomorrow to see if there's ways that we can maybe work together on, make sure we're all mapping it correctly with all the different layers that we have in our map. So, office-wise, the Winter Moratorium went in November 1st, so all electric meters are on, but we can turn off water. We don't want to turn off anybody, but just please make sure you stay current with your bills. From my other hat, I would just like to share, from the fire department, Brian Jones did retire last night. Forty-three years of service to the community, and so he stepped down from the school and the fire department yesterday, and last night appointed Darren Steinman as the new assistant chief, so I just wanted to share that. And we are at 203 calls, so that is on record pace. So, that's all I got.
Sky hold the mic. Thank you and congratulations to Brian Jones. Thank you and congratulations, Mr. Steinman. Brian, you just mentioned 43 years.
On fire.
We've had more than one in the last few years that retired after 40 plus years.
Jerry Sebby was 50, Barry Rogers was 48.
I don't think I'm the only one that thinks that's pretty incredible. I don't hear that from the neighboring communities a whole lot. So I would like to, while we are congratulating and thanking Mr. Brian Jones, kind of extend that to the entire group, and not just the ones now, but through the last several decades, some of these people have done so much, I mean, 40, 50 years on volunteer level. It's pretty remarkable stuff. So, thanks. Thank you. Mr. Billy Jones?
Good evening, everybody. So just a report on the police department. The big thing is Officer Emma Bloom, who is our newest officer on the force, she's entered into phase two of her field training office, of her field training portion of her employment. She, she's now moved to evening shift. So if you're out in the evening time, nighttime, 3 o'clock and later, you might, you might run into her. Hopefully it's for a good, a good reason. But she's training with Field Training Officer Officer Geilhoff, so they're paired up, and you'll see two of them in the car. Emma is handling all, if not, most, if not all, calls that they're dispatched to, to get her, the extra reps she needs, the understanding of the paperwork and procedures, before she moves into the interface three in about another month. So, it's going well. It's going really well. So, we're excited. Also going to share September, our September monthly report that I shared with Safety last night. So our total calls for the month of September were 192 calls. We made 18 criminal arrests. We issued or referred three juveniles to social services for a variety of things. We only wrote seven traffic citations, and we made two warrant or probation pickup warrant arrests. So the call volume is up. We're, we're still down two officers right now. One's in training, the other one's on a little surgery leave. So the calls are, continue to roll in, but the things are going well.
Thanks, Billy. Did I miss? I think I got over the department heads.
I didn't have to.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Jones coming to you and Ashley too. Go ahead.
So, for those of you who missed it, apparently there was some places it got around and some places it didn't. The Wisconsin Supreme Court actually came and visited our county courthouse to hear oral arguments on Monday, October 27th. Judge Sharp and Attorney Julie DeDune both had the opportunity to introduce the cases that the justices were hearing, and a number of local school groups came, including the winners. I don't have the details, I'm sorry, but there was a contest of some sort, and, and the winners were presented with their awards there. So the reason that the court left Madison at all, if you've ever wondered why a trial court level is called the circuit court, it's because back in the olden days, judges would hop on a horse and ride a circuit around the community and hear cases in different villages and things like that. And so the Supreme Court has a Justice on Wheels program wherein they kind of call back to that tradition, and they elected to choose Richland Center this time around. Whether it was coincidence or a deliberate decision, it coincided with the recent retirement of Chief Justice Anne Walsh Bradley, and so they presented her with a plaque, and her portrait is now hanging in the courthouse. She is a proud Richland Center resident, and it just shows that, you know, even coming from a small town, you can reach the heights of the legal profession. Certainly she has an enduring legacy and, you know, whether you agree or disagree, was, was influential in a number of legal matters that we still have to deal with and work around today. So I think we should all be very proud as a community to entice the Supreme Court here, and as Judge Sharp kind of put it, it was like the Super Bowl for lawyers, so I did enjoy myself.
Thank you. Ashley?
Sure, a few things. Happy to report, after about 10 or so hours, the Finance Committee completed their review of the draft 2026 budget. We have scheduled a special session for November 25th at 6:00 PM. Everyone is invited. We'll have a public hearing for the budget adoption and go through that. The clerk treasurer's office will be holding extended hours during property tax collection. So from mid-December to through the end of January, when property taxes are being paid at the city, we're adjusting our schedule so we can lengthen our days, so folks are able to get there, you know, after work or before work, things like that. So we'll put out an adjusted schedule on social media, our website, et cetera. So we're hoping, we've not tried this before, but we hope that that's helpful, and if it isn't, something that we'll continue to do. Open enrollment just ended on the 31st, so now we're, we're going through the process of processing employee benefit changes. I would encourage everyone to continue practicing email hygiene. We're seeing an uptick in phishing attempts, so make sure you're carefully reviewing your emails, using caution, and looking for anything suspicious. And if you notice anything, please report it as phishing. And lastly, I just would like to thank former alderman Mark Chambers. He gave us the opportunity to meet with freshman class from Weston. They came in and we were able to talk about city government, what is it, what are the roles, et cetera, and we even had the opportunity to have a mock city council meeting. So it was a, it was a fun experience, and so I'm just grateful that we had the opportunity to participate in that.
Thank you. And before I get off this point, Mr. Misty, did you have anything from the clerk's office?
Excuse me. Sure, Mayor. So just busy in there doing accounting and payroll and licensing. Got quite a few urban hunting licenses coming in. We've had some open records requests, so we're working diligently on trying to get those fulfilled, as well as recently received a petition, and so we have about 700 names that we need to verify and addresses. So, got a lot going on in there.
So on that, you're in the process of verifying the addresses?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks, Misty. I think I got all the department heads that are present tonight. Okay. Next up, mayor and all persons, commission, board reports and comments and/or items to be discussed at a future meeting. Mr. Ronfru?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Karen Tepley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Ad-Hoc Committee for Council Rules, we are still going over committees, commissions, and boards. We'll be meeting at the end of the month and continue that process, going through statutes and how they relate to all of those. And then from the Historic Preservation Commission, tomorrow, which is November 5th, at 4:30, at the community center, we are going to do an unveiling of a historic marker for former governor Vernon Thompson, so Richland Center resident, went on from being mayor for six years, then went on to state office, obviously, state office, and then the governor, and then went on to federal representation. So, if you can, join us tomorrow at 4:30 for the entire program. The history room will also provide some information, so you can make sure that. He was very accomplished. Like I said, I've been here for 30 years and I didn't, had never heard his name, so it's about time that we bring that up. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Next, Tom McCarthy?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
And Rachel Schultz?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Melanie Walters?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Doug Martinick?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Steve Downs?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
And Ryan Cairns?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, a few things I'd like to talk about. First of all, a little bit deeper on what Karen was talking about. I'm actually going to hand this down there for you folks to look at. It's kind of a agenda, I guess, overview of what's going to happen tomorrow at the park. I grew up here. I see in the audience Mr. Mark Sittesten, who was classmate of mine in the class of 85, and I see Tracy and Trent Connor here, who were in class of 84. They may have a different memory than I do, but I don't remember us in history class talking about Vernon Thompson. And when we got into this, and just so everyone knows, the reason we got into this is because Mr. Bob Bellman came down here, and he knew Mr. Thompson personally, and he asked us to put a memorial up to Vernon Thompson and said, "Did you even know there's a past governor of the state of Wisconsin who was raised here?" I didn't. I should have. We all should. He didn't just do that. He was governor, he was the state attorney general. He served, he was mayor here. He was the first mayor here to serve more than two terms. Left here to go be the state attorney general. He left that when he got elected. I believe next in the chronology, he became a state representative and then served many terms actually in the House of Representatives, and he was from this town. So what we're doing tomorrow is we're honoring him and putting a nice memorial to him. It will be across the park near where the GTE memorial is, and I think it's literally decades overdue, and I'm saying this tonight to invite everyone to come, if you have interest, and to make sure everyone knows who Vernon Thompson was, and to make sure that you all understand that the reason this group became aware of it, took it and ran with it, was because Mr. Bob Bellman came down and made us aware, and I think all of them should be recognized for what they've done. Okay, Halloween's over in Richland Center from Retreat. It was a huge hit. I saw a lot of people out involved in the Simons events. Billy, I'm not aware of any issues in town at all. It sounds like it worked great?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. When Halloween's over, Thanksgiving's coming, with Thanksgiving, Richland Center comes to rotary lights. The work has begun down there again, and I've heard from Keith Baling. He's got his hands full again. Another great event, and I encourage everybody to participate in that on the level that you can. We had our first meeting today, city, county, and representatives from the Simons Recreation Complex on the future of Simons. Mr. Tony Kurtz, Representative Tony Kurtz helped us get a grant to use to sort of map the future of that facility. As you know, when it was built in 1987, it was built not as part of the campus, but as a nice addition to the campus footprint, and Mayor Edson Darrell Wentz worked with the Simons family on that and later on the campus housing, trying to give that campus some things that the typical two-year did not have. While it's almost 40 years later, the building is now not new. A lot of work has been done, but more will need to be done, and just to make sure the public is aware of this, that facility has been subsidized by the city and the county since its inception. And we are now at a point where I don't know what the future looks like there, and that's not because of anybody's feelings. It's because when you look at where the budgets are and the available tax levy dollars versus what is mandated by the state to be covered by those dollars, funding there will probably change to a different model. And the point I want the public to take away is that all of us are committed to the future of that facility and preserving it for the community, and that's why this work is being done. And the first meeting took place today on that, and will be several more. And then also, our librarian, as Bill already said this, but we do have an opening on the library board. We also have two openings on the Historic Preservation Commission, so if anyone has interest in serving, please let us know. Let me know. We'll take that from there. All right. Next up, we have the treasurer's report.
So treasurer's report was included in your packet with a cover sheet. Just kind of brief you on that. So it was the cash balances for the end September 30th. Just got the bank statements today, so didn't have time to put together the October 31st balances. We started out with about 10.5 million in cash balances. Interest earned in the month of September was 33,856.47 across all of the accounts. Ended the month with about a $10.2 million balance. Pretty typical for this time of year. Not a lot of revenues coming in, expenses are going out. Also included the balance sheets for the three funds, the city funds, the Greater Richland Tourism Fund, and the library fund, and revenue and expenditures for a period ending September 30th. There's nothing out of the ordinary that jumped out at me. If anybody wants to go over it or has any questions, please contact me anytime. Happy to go over it in more detail and talk accounting with you all day long. Audit is complete. Johnson and Block will be on line tonight for the 2024 audit, and now we'll start planning for the 2025 audit. Ashley and I will be still looking at some copy releases and probably looking at that next year, 2026, just with everything else going on right now.
I think I asked the same question last month, but I'm going to ask it again because I know things have been changing. We see interest rates going down on what's being offered. We saw a cut, which a lot of people like for obvious reasons, Federal Reserve had a cut, but has this hit what the city's making on its money yet? Have we had a decrease?
I would say not as of September. I know that the latter part of October, it seemed like they had went down, and again, I just downloaded the bank statements today, so I don't know what those are, but certainly I look at that every month and try to make sure that our funds are in the right places to be making the most amount of interest that we're currently, that we currently can.
Yeah, I'm sure you do that. The reason I'm asking that is I want to make sure the funding sources the city has are obviously limited, and we talk and we investigate the council on what they are and what can happen. Well, that's another one of them, and I just want to make sure because every, we know this, the foreseeable budgets for the city that come to school are very challenging. I've said this publicly many times. I'll do it again right now, barring a significant change at the state level, this isn't going to get easier anytime soon. So I'm just trying to make sure the people up here who are tasked with approving the budgets every year have every piece of information they can as soon as they can have it. So, thank you for that. Okay, anything else on the treasurer's report? Okay, hearing on, next up, bills, paying another monthly bills. And while the council reviews those, that will be the following. The bills presented on this day, excluding any library funded invoices having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee, and said committee have duly investigated and audited these bills, hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions. No adjustments or exceptions are listed. It is signed by all three members of the Finance and Budget Committee. Once the council has had a moment to review those bills, entertain a motion to pay them.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion from Mr. Ryan Cairns. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Downs? Second by Mr. Downs. Discussion of the bills. Hearing on, we'll need a roll call, please.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Martinick?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruth?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Okay, next up, items for discussion and action. Item four, 2024 audit presentation by Bill Moyne of Johnson Block. Have we got Bill with us? All right. Hello, Bill Moyne?
Hello, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Is the audit presentation document shared with council members or being projected?
Oh.
Oh, okay. So I'm here tonight to present financial statements. We completed our audit of the city of Richland Center, the year 2024, and we issued unmodified opinion. That's the desire. Our report is dated October 1st, 2025, and they are presented to the city in a file and document as well as electronic PDF. We do not audit the utilities, which are the enterprise statements of the city. Those are, those funds are audited by another auditor, and then their report is submitted to us, which we use to develop the government-wide financial statements. Johnson and Block drafts the financial statements, and in doing so, present audit and report adjustments. Those have been reviewed and approved by management. The Secret Communications Document, which is provided along with the financial statements, should be read in conjunction with the financials. And Johnson and Block also submitted the weight load report with the Department of Revenue, the Form C. Page three, the 2024 financial highlights. The city continues to maintain strong financial position with cash liquidity and healthy bond balances. The general fund did record a decrease in fund balance in 2024 of 206,000, and overall government fund balance decreased by 539,000. Tax incremental finance for district number six, tax revenue, tax revenues were 130,832, which was primarily tip increment of 130,000. 130,832, which was primarily tip increment of 130,000, small amount of interest income. Tip expenses during the year were primarily debt service related principal interest expenses and then some project and engineering costs. Total expenses were 90,200. The city's economic development and housing loan programs have total loans receivable of 614,000. Those loans have been made to city property owners for improvements and development projects. Those loan balances were made up of 67,000 of revolving loan funds, 471,000 of housing deferred loans, and 75,000 of renewable, New Richland Center loans for the general fund. Loan loss reserves of 79, almost 80,000 have been recorded on the trial outs, which represent loans receivable that we believe and have discussed with management that are not collectible and would recommend writing on. The city's general fund has fund balance reserves set aside for specific purposes in, and that's designated as committed and assigned fund balances. In total, we're 2,629,000. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balances for 2024, the city reported just one major fund during 2024, the general fund, which is required major fund. All the rest of the government funds were reported in aggregate and shown as not major. So that's your RLF, the housing fund, library, and TIPs. Total revenues in 2024 were 6,917,000. Total expense was 8,011,000. We have other financing sources and uses during the year, transfers between funds and some proceeds from sale of capital assets, which totaled inflow of 554,000. So in total, our fund balance began the year at 11,238,000. It decreased by 539,000 to 10,699,000. Page five is a budget actual for the general fund. The, there were some revenues and expenses that were budgeted that just didn't occur. So that's why we have some of these significant differences. We budgeted 11.8 million in revenue and actual revenues were 6.6 million. So that was an unfavorable difference of 5.2 million, which is primarily made up of intergovernmental grants that were budgeted that just were not received. And those projects, we'll get to that, are primarily related to the capital outlay line and the expenses. We budgeted 5.5 and actual costs were 1.4. So that's a difference of 4,85,000. Total expense budget was 12.2 million, actual 7.4. That's a favorable difference of 4.7 million. Other financing sources and uses, we have transfers between funds, the transferring from the utilities for payment of a tax, which resulted in 665,000 for general fund. So fund balance in general fund started the year with 9.8 million and ended the year with 9.6 million. The government reports various types of fund balance, going from most restricted to least restricted. Non-spendable fund balance in general fund is made up of prepayments, economic development loans, and during personal property taxes. So the non-spendable is 234,000. Restricted fund balance is set aside either for law resolution or specific required use of the funds. Restricted fund balance was 2,747,000. Committed fund balance is cash that's set aside for specific purposes. Total committed fund balance was 2.5 million. Assigned fund balance is set aside for specific purpose, but different than committed because committed is set aside by governing body. The governing body sets that. And assigned fund balance is set aside by management. Total assigned fund balance of 231,000. And then everything else is unassigned at 4,919,000. Page seven is a makeup and visual representation of the 2024 revenues. Thirty-eight percent of revenues are taxes and special assessments. Thirty-seven percent are intergovernmental revenues. Twelve percent are public charges to services. Eight percent is interest income. And the last five percent is licenses and permits, penalties and force securities and miscellaneous revenues. And some comments on the cash flow. Property taxes, which make up 38% of our revenues, are collected primarily in January and August. And the interim revenues are coming, which makes up 37% of our revenues. Shared taxes is the most significant at 1.6 million. About 90% of that is received mid-November. And transportation grants are received quarterly. And the equalized value of property over the six-year period presented, the equalized values in the city increased from 321 million in 2020 to 468 million in 2025. That's a Property taxes, property taxes in 2023 were 2,375,000 and in 2024 decreased slightly And the property tax roll for the 2024 levy that was collected in 2025, school district receives 25%. Cards are messed up on my monitor. The city receives 27%. The county receives, county receives 25%. The school gets 42% at 3.5 million. TIP district gets 2%, 128,000. And the vocational school gets 4% at 347,000. Governmental fund, 2024 expenses, public safety makes up 25% of total expense, culture and recreation 16%, public works 17%, general government 13%, capital outlay 18%, debt service at 6%, and conservation and development 5% of total expense. And long-term obligations for both the government and business-type activities. The city started the year with just under 5 million outstanding in bonds and direct borrowing. We made scheduled payments of 361,000, which left 4,636,000 outstanding at the end of the year. Other liabilities reported in the financial statements are compensated absences, which increased primarily related to a new GAZB standard that was required to be implemented in 2024, which caused the government to report more sick leave than we have in the past for sick leave. Termination benefits and landfill post-closure care costs. Total other liabilities were 816,000. In the utilities, they started the year with 19.5 million outstanding in long-term debt. They borrowed 480,000, made scheduled payments of 963,000. So they have just over 19 million outstanding at the end of the year. And compensated absences went from 298,000 to 294,000. The obligation debt limit totals 20,792,000. And subject to that limit is 4.4 million. So significant amount of debt capacity remains for the city. Shouldn't need to rise. And finally, the brief summary of the ex-incremental financing district. The city just has one TIP district outstanding in 2024, TIP number six. Cumulative to-date expenses in TIP six were 1,699,000. And cumulative revenues to date were 1,755,000. So the financial activity of the district has been financed by general obligation, debt, and advances from general fund. And effective in 2024, the advances from general fund have been paid back in full. So TIP six has positive fund balance and capacity for development grants, et cetera. The 2024 equalized values in TIP six, the base value of TIP six, when it was created, was 28,000. Current value is 6.3 million. So we have, we developed increment of 6.3 million in that TIP. Any questions?
Go ahead, Rachel.
Back on page six, you had unassigned in the document?
Yes.
And the unassigned amount is nearly half of the total. Is that typical?
Were governments that have significant and healthy fund balance, it would be, it would be typical. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moyne, when you talk about, we have one open TIP district, which for the public's benefit, that was created to get Panorama State started, I think in 2018. If that's wrong, it's 2017. That's the only act of TIP we've got. This Richland Center's position, the total debt we've got, how are we comparing to other municipalities of similar size?
I would say that, correct me if I'm, maybe Ashley and Missy can reenact. How much of the long-term debt that's outstanding is related to the TIP district? Let me just pull up, I like being virtual, so I can just pull up my word paper as an answer to a question here. The city of Richland Center does not have much long-term debt compared, compared to like other cities of Richland Center's size.
Thank you. That was really the question I was asking. I know a lot of effort has gone in here in the recent past, preceding my time down there for several mayors, several councils and so on, to avoid that. And we've done a pretty good job with that. And every year I've been here in your audits, it's pretty much been the same audit every year. Richland Center's in a strong position. Richland Center's got adequate cash. Richland Center doesn't have a lot of debt. But when we are talking to other municipalities, that's not the case. A lot of them have been doing short-term borrowing to pay their bills, things like that, which we've not gotten into here. And I just wondered if that, the last I knew from you a year ago, we were comparing very favorably in that category with some of our peers. And it sounds like that's still the case.
It's still the case.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Moyne?
Just to go back, Panorama, we have about 650,000 in debt. We'll meet.
Okay.
At the end of 2020.
Yeah, so the long-term debt that's reported there is, on TIP number, TIP number six will be financed and it's not on the general fund. So that's something to think about as well.
Any other questions for Bill? I'm not hearing any other questions for you at this point, Mr. Moyne. Did you have more that you want to add?
No, I don't have anything additional. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you again, as ever here, Bill, and to you and your team over there at Johnson Block.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Item five, a resolution providing informed consent for continuing representation by apt swain law. Mr. Wendell, why is this here?
Mr. Mayor, I have been tracking the ongoing negotiations between the city and the county regarding provision of emergency medical services. And with the city's consultation of outside counsel regarding that dispute, I have reached the conclusion that there is a concurrent conflict of interest, which according to the Supreme Court rules by which I am bound dictates that I need to withdraw my representation. This is a contingency that I inform the council could arise at the time of my appointment. And those same rules do allow for the retention of my representation so long as the council is willing to grant a conflict of interest waiver. I do want to say I am bound to continue my representation of the city for so long as it does not materially impact the best interests of the city. So if the council is not comfortable acting on this tonight, it can be reviewed by the same outside counsel referenced earlier. But put it frankly, I would love to continue representing the city. I cannot do that and maintain my ethical requirements at the current moment. And so I am asking that the council let me keep doing this job that I love.
Okay. So what you're referring to, the legal term here is informed consent?
Yes.
And that is you telling the city that in this instance, which as you stated, is the ongoing, I guess, negotiation at this point of the future of the Richland EMS service, that since you represent the county and the city, you now have a conflict. So you are in this instance informing the city that on this point, which is the negotiation of the future of Richland EMS, you cannot represent the city. Did I get that right?
With just one correction, I cannot represent either the city or the county. And unless informed consent is given, that means at all. So if consent is not given by both parties, I will need to withdraw from representation of one or both.
Okay, fair. So I'm going to read this resolution that was prepared to deal with this. And then we'll open this to the council for discussion. This is Resolution 2025-11, a resolution providing informed consent for continuing representation by apt swain law LLC, which is the firm which is, which employs attorney Michael Wendell. Whereas city attorney Michael S. Wendell had notice of a determination of a concurrent conflict of interest between Richland Center and Richland County due to the dispute over the provision of emergency medical services. And whereas pursuant to Supreme Court Rule 21.7, such a conflict requires that an attorney discontinue their representation of one or more parties involved in the conflict. And whereas the same rule does allow for a waiver of such conflicts with the informed consent of the clients, and the common council is the appropriate body to grant such a waiver. And whereas the council wishes attorney Wendell to continue his representation of the city in matters other than emergency medical services, now therefore be resolved by the common council of the city of Richland Center that the proposed waiver attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference is granted and be further resolved that apt swain law LLC and attorney Wendell shall continue their representation of the city per the current contract except for matters related to the provision of emergency medical services and be it further resolved that this resolution is effective upon its passage and publication. Okay. So what this is saying is you're asking the council to adopt this, which would allow you to continue in your service as city attorney with the exception of what we're doing with our emergency services?
Yes.
And without this, you cannot continue because there's a conflict?
Correct.
There we go. Open this for conversation, discussion by the council. And if anyone would like to, now is the time when you could make a motion either way on this.
I move we approve Resolution 2025-11, a resolution providing informed consent for continuing representation by apt swain law LLC as outlined in the document we've just read.
Motion from old person Schultz. Is there a second?
I second.
Second for Mr. Martinet. Okay. Is there discussion beyond this point or on this point? Is there discussion beyond this point or on this point?
Just one quick question. So does the county also have to give informed consent for all of this to take place, or just the city for you to continue representing the city?
So if the county does not waive the conflict, I will need to contemplate. There is an option wherein I withdraw from, if I withdraw from representation of one of the organizations, the conflict ceases to exist because I'm no longer bound in representing address interest to it. I frankly haven't given you much thought as to which one, how I would do that. Certainly, the county has to go through the same process, so I may be forced to make that determination, but.
We're presenting this thing to the county?
Switching council for board, but yes.
Okay. But they're version of it?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
And the informed consent to conflict of interest referenced in the resolution is attached. It kind of outlines the nature of the conflict, why I think that this is necessary, but I'm also here to answer questions for those of you who are verbal learners.
Okay. Any further discussion on this point? Okay, we have the motion and the second, so we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Walters?
Aye.
Martnik?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Frue?
Aye.
Tupley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that motion is carried. So then we put the next agenda item, I will just, right. On this point, based on that, Mr. Wendell is not representing the city on item six, which is the 2026 EMS contract. Ashley, you want to take that?
Sure. Unfortunately, this is a really difficult item, and I hope to have better information to relay than I do. We have been receiving the service of attorney Hagan with Boardman Clark, who has reached out to the county's attorney, who is, I believe, Andy Phillips, for this subject matter. Attorney Hagan has proposed some revisions to the contract that the county has presented to us, which we have seen before. And as of today, the county has been unwilling to accept the revisions that we have proposed. And I just want to outline those revisions, what they were. The primary purpose of the revisions were to address maintaining or obtaining eligibility to use levy limit adjustments. So the participating municipalities in the service, we do have the ability to exceed the allowable levy under certain circumstances. It requires that we're a joint district. There's some sort of joint oversight, and that the agreement would be between the municipalities that are members of this joint district and then contracting, in this case, the county to provide a service, or it could be contracting with a private entity to provide the service. So it was really important, based on what we know today with the way levy limits are, et cetera, that we wanted to preserve the ability to qualify for a levy limit adjustment. And so there were revisions to meet those standards, to be considered a joint EMS district as per DOR's requirements. We also wanted to ensure that we were addressing what would occur to, or with the assets upon dissolution. So in the current agreement we have with the county, there is language that addresses assets. So if the county is no longer providing the service, then as far as vehicles, equipment, et cetera, what happens to those? So in our current agreement, whoever takes over the service, oversight of the service would retain those assets. In the new contract the county has presented, that language is entirely omitted. So it's not clear what happens with the assets. It's assumed that the county would retain all of those. So that includes, you know, if there's a fund balance in the ambulance account, as well as any vehicles, equipment, et cetera. And I'll note that that is, it is a real concern because the way the ambulance has been funded is through billing, primarily through billing, and then municipal contributions, not county tax levy. The county hasn't purchased these vehicles and equipments. It's been the members of the ambulance service and through billing, et cetera, that these, and grants, that these.
When you say the members, that means the city of Richland Center, for instance, Richland Township, Marshall Township, Village of Boaz, Village of Yuma. These are municipalities that paid into this.
Exactly. And that's been 13, so one city, us, two villages, and 10 towns have paid in and purchased these things. So for them to not have any sort of, I don't want to say claim, but any sort of claim to the future of those assets doesn't seem appropriate, and it seems contrary to what was intended by the agreement that we're currently under, and it's the same language that has existed since about 2014. So to completely omit that is of high concern and is something that I don't believe we should just accept. And then also looking at what is, what is the best way to assess a cost per municipality? There's been a lot of confusion and changes and questions related to how billing for municipal contributions is calculated. It has been based on an average call volume, which is not necessarily the typical way in which these contributions are calculated. So we've proposed as an alternative, kind of a hybrid model where we don't abandon the call volume averaging, but we also factor in population. So how many people reside within the municipalities and what would be a per capita rate that we could assess? We've also asked, we've provided options in these revisions. So could the county, would the county levy for the service? If they were to do that, the need for a joint EMS district wouldn't exist. We wouldn't need that for a levy limit adjustment. The county doesn't have the same constraints, the same requirements for a levy adjustment. They don't have to adopt a resolution like we did earlier this year. They don't have to have all other participating municipalities adopt a resolution, and they're not capped. So our levy adjustment allows us to increase our levy beyond what the state allows based on CPI. So whatever the CPI adjustment is, plus 2% of your expenditures for last year. So for us, the cost of the ambulance service is, under the terms of the contract the county has provided, it's increasing over $50,000. But if we qualify for a levy adjustment, that would amount to about $5,000. So that's not even close to what our cost actually is increasing by, but it's more than nothing. And that's not, that's not the case for the county. The county has the ability to levy all, some, none, as they are, without having the same hoops to jump through that we do. So we proposed, you know, an alternate calculation for assessing a fee to municipalities, and we also suggested an option where municipalities would be charged the same as they were in 2025, but then the county would levy the difference to make their budget whole. So they would still get the total amount that they need to operate in 2026, and that they've adopted in their budget, but it would be a levy spread across the county, and it would amount to about $5.26 per person in Richland County to make that budget whole. We've, we've asked to include language about segregated funds, so that is something that exists in our current agreement. You've probably heard Fund 51, that's the ambulance fund, there's a couple more. But that, that's pertinent when we talk about if the county does stop providing an ambulance service, whether that's in a year or 10 years, whatever it may be, having that fund segregated if it's going to be transferred to, say, a joint EMS district. We would want to have that in that way. We also understand that the county does not wish to have the Joint Ambulance Committee continue to, to exist, if you will. And as I, as I believe I understand, they have adopted a resolution that dissolves the Joint Ambulance Committee at the beginning of 2026.
In the September meeting of the Joint Ambulance Committee, we were informed that the committee will be disbanded at the end of this calendar.
Yes. And so understanding that, while also understanding that in order to be eligible for levy adjustments, et cetera, under a joint EMS district, there has to be some form of joint oversight. And that's what the Joint Ambulance Committee was designed to do. So we did revise the contract to add that back in essentially. However, understanding from what we believe we understand about the county's position, the language was adjusted so that that Joint Ambulance Committee would not have as much authority and power, per se, as they currently are allotted under the agreement we have.
And so it's being changed to an advisory committee?
Essentially.
Which is simply give advice.
Right, right. And then we did request some language be added under the indemnification section, and that's just as CYA in the event that it may be needed. So just some additional language there. So overall, the communication between the attorneys, the county's attorney, did note to our attorney that our requests were reasonable. What we've asked was reasonable. However, the county's not willing to entertain the revisions due to not having enough time to do so primarily. And however, they did indicate that they would be willing to include an addendum that acknowledges that some municipalities have formed a joint EMS district. They said four. Now, some, it seems to me that there have been about eight municipalities that have agreed to the 2026 contract, and those that haven't seems to be about four. And so if those four municipalities that haven't agreed to this would like some sort of acknowledgement that they're forming a joint EMS district, the county would, would be on board for that, but beyond that, it is what it is. And that's incredibly disheartening from my perspective. And the, as I mentioned, we're not asking for anything that is, even their attorney would say is unreasonable. We want to ensure that we are providing the service, this critical service, and not having a gap. We also want to prevent issues with if, if either the city, any municipality, to include the county, if they do not provide the same level of service, they will be, they will incur a penalty for that. So for example, if the city decided, no, we're not legally required to provide EMS, and so we're just going to not, we're not going to do that. In 2027, we would have a penalty for that, and we would lose 15% of our shared revenue.
Let me stop on that point. Okay. This is for the council and the public both. At the last meeting of the Joint Ambulance Committee, committee president Carrie Severson, who is an elected member of our county board and has served in the Joint Ambulance Committee for several years, printed copies of the state statute that pertains to the responsibility, whose responsibility is it to provide ambulance service? And this is unique, and I can't explain it. But state law is different for a city, a county, and a township. And what he did, that's why he printed all three. So statute, state law pertaining to a city says, key word in here, the city may, that's the big word right there, may contract with a group or individual to transport the city The county may contract with a group or individual for transporting the sick or injured. A township shall. Therefore, for some reason, state law, a township is mandated to provide ambulance, whereas the county and the city are not. I have no idea why the state did that, but that's what it says. So when we get into this conversation, obviously, this city is going to provide an ambulance service. That's, don't worry about that. But believe it or not, we're not required to. Now you go into what Ashley just stated, which is a different law, a more recent one. The city and the county may not be mandated to provide ambulance, but we've been doing so. We've been financially contributing to the provision of EMS, which we should. Because we have been, now, if we don't, if we withdraw that money we have been spending, we are now subject to a loss of about the 15% of our state aid, which would be catastrophic. Okay? So when you see, my face is nice and red right now. And when you hear the frustration, it's because this information came to us the last week of September, and to all the members, the participating municipalities. And the last week of September, the message from the county was, on Monday, you'll get an email with a one-year contract, sign it by November 1st, or find a different ambulance. And they're telling us they don't have enough time. I'm not a big fan of that message coming from the group that gave us six weeks and all of the other municipalities. And if you think it's a problem for the city, go out to Yuma and ask them where they're going to find the money to fund this because they don't have it. Period. So they say, not my opinion. So here we are in this situation. We will provide an ambulance service for our people. It is not a debatable. We know that the people of this community want the Richland EMS service to continue rather than to replace it. At least that's the feedback that I'm getting, lots of it. I do not argue the point. That's what I want to. The problem we've got is short-term rather than long-term, meaning once we get through '26 or get an agreement for '26, we can start working on the next 10 years. There is legislation pending. This information came to me directly from Representative Tony Curtis. He and Senator Howard Markline have co-sponsored a bill that would allow a group of eight or more municipalities to form an ambulance district, and would give it, in his words, taxing power to do that. So if we wanted to do that, once this gets passed, assuming the state adopts that law at some point in the spring, I guess, if that were to happen, then we could look at forming a district. But to do that, Tony tells me, would take a referendum. So this is not a 10-minute fix, if that's even what's chosen. But that is something Mr. Curtis and Mr. Markline are working on because EMS issues are popped up all across the state. It's a problem all over the place. Okay. If not a district, we could continue an agreement with the county, and the county could continue to have the ambulance service, which is what it is right now, is the county's ambulance service. The county has an exemption that the city does not have. The county has an exemption that the townships and the villages do not have, wherein the county can levy for EMS where we can't do that. Long-term, they're not saying no. They are saying we don't know. They're not saying no for the long-term. They're saying no for 2026 because they're saying that would have to be provided to the state by the 15th of November. And what are we on today? We're about 10 days away. So they're saying no. Ashley, repeat for me in your math, if every municipality that has been financially supporting Richland EMS were to pay into it the same exact amount in '26 that we all paid in '25, and coupled with that, if the county were to levy a per-person tax for EMS across the entire county, how much per person would they need to levy?
About $5.26 per person.
And that hit a hard no. Because they said they don't have time.
And additionally, they have indicated that they are not necessarily comfortable levying the entire county for a service that not every resident in the county uses. However, when you, when we all consider what county services do we use? We don't use all of the county services on an individual basis that we pay taxes for, right? It's not, not everybody goes to zoning, not everybody goes to HHS, not everybody has the sheriff's office involved. But we want to know that we can use them if we need them, right? right? And so, we're willing to pay taxes to have those services available. We also know that we travel, and so Richland Center is the county seat, and so you may need an ambulance when you're in Richland Center, even if you live in the town of Forest. And we want that to be available. And so, to shut it down with that rationale, I think is disappointing.
Okay, so, for the council benefit, all right. The current contract for ambulance service in the city ends at the end of the calendar year. We are less than two months away. We don't have an ambulance service for January 2nd, for January 1st, at this point. This has to be resolved, we don't have time, we have to resolve it. Okay? The county has said no beyond sign your contract for next year. Have they given any other option?
Well, just as a reminder, how did we even get here? So, right, November 26th, we got the one-year contract, which was immediately concerning because we didn't have...
That was September 26th.
I'm sorry, September 26th. It was immediately concerning because we didn't have what, the amount of time we generally would have to review and negotiate. There wasn't time for that. And so we did, we did ask for some changes to that, they were not received. We asked for, rather than this new version of the contract, can we just extend the existing agreement that we have to give us more time to come up with a, either a long-term solution or we go another way? We need more time. That was, they're, the three-month extension provided to us, I informed them that it was not, it was not acceptable the way in which it was written, because it has all of these same very concerns that I've outlined tonight, were contained within that as well. They didn't resolve any of the concerns, it wasn't an extension of the existing agreement, it was a new agreement. And so we're making a significant shift from what we've done for over a decade, and not giving, being given adequate time to review, and not being given the opportunity to really negotiate at all, let alone in good faith. And so after that request for the three-month extension, then it was back to a one-year contract, November 1st deadline in place. They, since then, they made some adjustments to the call averaging numbers, and so there's been some reductions in those. And then they extended the deadline to November 11th. And so now the city's in the position where, to the mayor's point, we need an ambulance service. However, we've been, we've been backed into a corner, not provided any sort of consideration in the difficult decision this is, and effectively, if the city does not agree to the contract as presented, what we've done is, we've ended the ambulance service. So the county has been unwilling to negotiate in good faith, knowing that if we do not accept the terms of their contract, the ambulance service is over.
The reason she said that is because without the city's considerable contribution to the current ambulance service, the rest of the municipalities don't have the money to continue. That's just, none of them would argue that. So if we leave, I don't, none of them have an ambulance service for January 1st. So you understand the position we're in? Now, nobody moves this point, this is very important. This is 2026, that's a mess. It's not the long-term future, I think we figure that out, but we gotta do something for 2026, and we don't have any more time. Okay. Said this once before, but I really want to make sure nobody, I want the people who work for Richland EMS to understand that everybody in this place supports them, and that we're trying to work this out, because we value them, and we understand how critically important their service is to everyone who lives here. So, we need to figure out 2026. Now, we're doing it under difficult circumstances, we've just outlined that, but we've got an obligation here, and we also have a situation where by law, because we've been on the head if we don't, we're gonna take a significant hit from the state in our state aid, which we can't afford.
And so will the county.
And so will the county. Based on the facts, we need an ambulance service, we want Richland EMS, if at all possible, to be the long-term provider of that service. We don't have an ambulance lined up at midnight, 8:00, 12:00 AM, January 1st, and it was not November, and we can't get a better deal right now, because the county is saying they're out of time. Therefore, my recommendation to the council, love it, hate it, tolerate it, is to approve the one-year contract for 2026, because to leave the Richland EMS service at this time would collapse the service.
So I would say that we have a few options, that's one of them. Certainly, the deadline is November 11th, so we could choose to wait and see if the attorney can make any more headway. That would require a special session to make a decision after waiting, and again, it's November 4th right now, November 11th isn't far away, as the mayor said, we can execute the contract. Or we could tell the county that we're willing to sign either a three-month, or a three-month extension of the current agreement, no changes, we'll sign that, give us time to sort these things out, or we will agree to sign the 2026 contract with revisions as provided by Attorney Hagan. I think those are options that we have, and if the county, if it was the last option, if the county chose not to accept that, then the county, that means that the county is willing to end the ambulance service, because they're not willing to negotiate at all.
I'm gonna stop right there and open this for discussion by the council. That's a lot of information, and it needed to be. Thoughts, questions?
So, you mentioned the Attorney Hagan had some concepts or ideas that he would be willing to bring forward. Do you know what those are, or are those...
Do you mean from financial?
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, so, I worked on them and provided them to the attorney, and he has submitted them to the county. And so, one of those options was seeking that the county would levy that about $89,000, and that's because we had such a significant increase in cost from '25 to '26, under the new rates the county has proposed, that the service is in one step cost prohibitive for not only us, but, you know, the town of Richland and others. And so that would, essentially what that would do is it would allow us to take more of an incremental shift, incrementally increase it. We're not, I'm not to the county, or anyone that I'm aware of has, from the city, has expressed anything other than an acknowledgement that, yes, it costs more money to run the ambulance service, and we fully appreciate that, and we know we'll need to contribute more, that's not, that's not a question, but to increase the cost in one move by over $50,000, that's not a tenable option. So, that was, would be one way to address it. The county levying the entire amount for the ambulance service is another way to address it. Or, it could be just, we have to come up with the money as they've requested in order to participate. So, we've proposed things like that, and even about a month, five weeks ago, I was in communication with the county administrator, asking questions, trying to solve for this problem. Can we do fundraising? Can we, can we do anything to make an incremental adjustment rather than this huge adjustment? And I was very clearly told that that's not a possibility. It is what it is, or you don't participate.
So I know the call numbers have come down, I know you've been given like three different numbers. Have they given you any formula or anything on how they're coming up with these call numbers, average call numbers?
No.
Yes.
They have not communicated to the city anything beyond, here's your number, your total number. And so it's, and the way that the contract is written, is that any call that originates within the city is assigned to the city, so that counts as a call for us. If it happens within the city, it doesn't matter where you live, you could live in Texas, but need the ambulance service in Richland Center, the city is going to have that call attributed to it. And so, okay, but we have not been allowed to see any of the actual raw data, so like a spreadsheet that lists all of the calls and the locations in which they originated from, they've not been willing to provide that information to the city or other municipalities that I'm aware of, when it's been requested. So, they're giving us a total number, which we're assuming is consistent with what the contract reads, but we have no way to validate that.
Last question, did Attorney Hagan feel that he had some negotiating room?
I would feel that it's fair to say, his assessment is that the county is indicating that they're willing to negotiate, but that is not actually their intent at all. Perhaps the expression lip service may have been made.
All right, so, Ashley pointed out, we could do this on the 11th. I understand why that's an option. I don't like it. Not only do the people in the city, Richland Center, need to know the future of the ambulance service that they're relying on, fairly or unfairly to the city's position simply as if we leave, doesn't matter what Boaz wants to do, it doesn't matter what Forest Township wants to do, their ambulance service won't be there. Therefore, several other municipalities are waiting on our answer. And maybe more important than those critically important, the people who work down there. We're seven weeks from the end of the contract. I really will not advocate for waiting. Regardless, Ashley's points, Mr. Hagan's points are very valid about the issues of what's been presented to the city, which I agree are there. We have no ambulance January 1st. We have EMTs. Right now, waiting to hear what we're gonna do, we have other municipalities waiting to hear what we're gonna do. We're not gonna get everything we want for 2026, that can't be more obvious. Once we get through 2026, we're into it, we can work on the long-term agreement, and for the record, I favor county wire levy, which wouldn't hurt anybody and would ensure the future of the service. We can't force that, and they're telling us no for '26. Again, my advice to the council is to approve the agreement we've been presented with, whether you ever don't, and that's not my choice, it's yours. Any more questions or comments? Have any of the other municipalities actually acted on this?
I know that Yuma has decided to receive service elsewhere, and it sounds like maybe seven or eight municipalities have agreed to participate under the terms of the contract that their county has presented. The two municipalities that are affected most, aside from assets, of course, by the contract are Richland Center and the town of Richland, they're the two largest contributors, neither of which have yet agreed to the contract. And additionally, Boaz and, I think it's Henrietta, but I might be misspeaking, they're also being represented by Attorney Hagan, and have been joining us in the correspondence and these efforts.
You mentioned percentage, but during the budget discussion, you actually assigned a dollar number to what the decrease would be in our shared revenue, and it's significant. Do you remember what that was?
It was over $200,000 for us, and it was over $300,000 for the county. And I would like just to take a moment, that I, it's, it's interesting that I get to hear conversation at the county level addressing the impact and the loss of 15% of their shared revenue. And I don't want to, I don't want to speculate, but I also want to make sure that I emphasize the importance of the assets with the ambulance service, because if you were to retain all those assets, say the city retained all those assets, and we were able to liquidate them, a loss in shared revenue, we might not feel it. But if we don't retain assets and we see a loss in our shared revenue, we are absolutely going to feel it, and it's going to have a horrible impact. And so that's, that's a question that I have, and the concern that I have is about accepting the terms of this contract as it pertains to the assets, are, in a year, if the county decides, you know what, we're not in this anymore, we're not going to do it, we have no, this is the shortest contract that's ever been provided for the ambulance, so that's different, first of all, and so there's so much uncertainty around the future of the ambulance. So if in a year, we sign this contract, we lose any provisions related to assets, how they will be addressed, if the county is no longer providing the service, and say these municipalities want to form together a legitimate joint EMS district, we are starting with nothing. We wouldn't have an ambulance, we wouldn't have any equipment, we certainly wouldn't have a building. So to willingly agree, to let that go with no indication or no sense of any, of any kind, that the county would work with us if there was a dissolution and the ending of the service, and we would have to start from scratch to have our own Richland EMS to form what exists now all over again, how would we ever do it? We couldn't. It is the depth of the ambulance.
That's exactly what it would be, what that would be too, is a contract with a different ambulance provider.
Yes.
That's what it would be.
So in order, if that is not what we want, we have to make a stand now.
I am assuming that the November 11th deadline is because that's the county's executive finance committee meeting, and I do see that on their agenda, they're discussing the ambulance, and so I'm assuming they want an answer so that they can prep for their November 18th county board meeting. Their finance and executive meeting, or committee meets twice a month, they will also be meeting the week of Thanksgiving. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask, or request, demand, whatever we want to do, that we be allotted more time to give our response. They are making us scramble, they're making everybody scramble, so that we can be on their timeline. They are as easily able to call a special session as everybody else is to address this. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for additional time so that we can call a special session, because I feel that we're gonna, we're gonna spend a lot of time tonight discussing this, I think this would be better as like a standalone, and then we can kind of go over, and then maybe the attorney, I'm sorry, I forget his last name.
Hagan.
Hagan. By that time, we'll have some additional information for us. I mean, we've discussed this contract almost ad nauseam, and it's not good for anyone except Richland County. It's not beneficial for any of the citizens, no one. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them to push that deadline back, but I'm assuming that is why their deadline is November 11th, is for their executive finance committee.
I agree, and they've already adopted this budget.
Right.
So, and the solution, or the revisions in here, would, depending on where it goes, they don't even necessarily need to amend their budget. And so whatever state deadlines, you know, they're up against, if they're unwilling to levy, then the budget has no bearing on this conversation anymore, that's, that's over. However, there's other concerns that need to be resolved, and there is just as much time to amend agreements between those municipalities that have already signed, if they extend the deadline, as well they provided us to sign the agreement anyway. So there is time to make changes, it's just a lack of will at this point.
Okay, so, options open to the council. We almost are gonna have to do it. I really don't feel like there's a decision coming tonight, although that's yours to make if you want to, otherwise we'll be doing a special session, we're gonna have to do that, because we have to without something for '26. I would encourage city residents, of which we just lost quite a few. I would encourage city residents, of which we just lost quite a few.
You have to go to school.
Yeah. City residents, I will remind you, you are also county residents, and I would encourage everybody to pay attention to this and contact not only your city council, which you're free to do, please, but also representatives on the county board, because too much posturing here, and how much state aid are we talking about at the city and the county if this doesn't get done?
Nearly $600,000 lost in 2027.
Yeah, all right. I'm done for now. Does anybody else have anything else to say?
What was the dollar increase for what they wanted us to sign?
So the way that they calculated is based, it's going from $177 per call to $225 per call, and it's based on the average of calls in the four years prior. And so I think, forgive me if I'm slightly off on that 177, there's been a lot of numbers coming through on this, but our call average, in the contract, or sorry, the agreement we're currently in, it was 677. That, so it would have been 677 times that rate. In the new contract, it's $225 times our new call average, and then as our first agreement that they provided us in, at the end of September, we were at 813.5, something like that, calls, average calls. And since then, they, the numbers have moved, and now we're at, I believe it's 704.5, so 7.4.5 times 225 is the total cost to the city. Right now, in 2025, we're paying $115,090 for the service.
It's gone up to about 159.
So increasing to about $159,000, 115 to 159.
If we did have a special session, would Attorney Hagan be willing to, I'm sure he would remote into that, because obviously, like, you know, considering the circumstances, if Attorney Wendell were still a part of this, we would be turning and looking at him and saying, we have questions for you. So it might be helpful to have him present, even remote, not even physically present, even remote into a special session, so that we can ask some more, you know, legal logistical questions.
Okay, and then just a clarification to make sure the public got that the first time on this point, on the EMS contract, the city's being represented at this point by Boardman Clark Law Firm in Madison, which the city's had a multi-decade relationship with. What's the attorney's name?
Hagan is the last.
Attorney Hagan is representing us, Boardman Clark, just for the public's knowledge. Okay, questions, comments?
I think Melanie's suggestion is a good one, that we could hear from the attorney during a special session, I think it deserves it.
Well, that's gonna need to be within the next week here.
Unless your other suggestion to demand an extension of that November 11th deadline, which, by the way, November 11th is Veterans Day, just sort of ways.
Does the council want to take any action on this tonight?
Ashley, how would we demand that? Just simply your request?
Well, I think a conversation with Attorney Hagan to see how this fits in his schedule also, and use that date to have us come to the table.
You know, practically speaking, with the county's budget already being adopted, and the probability of them being willing to levy any amount, let alone whether it's $89,000 or the full amount of the ambulance service, that probability is so low. Their need for a November 11th deadline outside of just meeting their meeting schedule, I don't understand the necessity. Why, it would be impossible to allow us an extension. So to even allow us to get into December, to make a decision, have time to consult with the attorney, all of those things, I think that's very reasonable, and as we all know, we don't have an alternative, nor do any of the other towns. So regardless, they're indicating that we need to have, we need to know this information, and we need to be able to have security for our employees. I agree they need to have that, however, this should have started about six months sooner, if that was a real concern. We don't have an alternative, so we have to find a solution with the county. We have to. And I think what I'm hearing is that the council is committed to finding a solution, but it can't be by through strong-arming and bullying us into something.
So I'll ask again, if the council wants to take action tonight, words are fruit, you could move to demand an extension of the deadline, whatever you want, if you want to, I mean, I don't see a way around this, at some point in the next few days, I'm gonna have to call a special session on this. We've gotta get a resolution, gotta get an end here, and at that, whether virtually or physically, we'll have Attorney Hagan present, I'm sure. If the council, you don't have to take any action tonight, if the council so chooses, you could do, for example, move to demand, how we're gonna phrase it, an extension of the deadline given, or a negotiation of any terms that you heard, did you know any of that, it's yours to do.
Well, I think when Attorney Hagan is available, is also going to determine when we can hold a special session. And, I mean, I sit up in the courtroom and often listen to attorneys say, sorry, that doesn't work for me, sorry, that doesn't work for me, and they make it work for when the attorneys are available, and the county should be able to do that for us as well, is say, I'm sorry, but our attorney is not gonna be available until after that deadline, so we'll call, we're gonna call a special session on whatever date he's available, and then we'll get you a response. Because I agree, I feel like we're being, like you said, pushing and pulling, I feel like we're being strong-armed into this, and we should be able to have some time to consult with our legal counsel, make the appropriate decision for our constituents.
Is that your motion?
Does anyone, okay, one more time, does the council want to take action on this tonight, or do you not?
I think I'd like to make a motion to direct, as Minister Olafant, to have a conversation with the attorney to set the date going forward for a special session.
And then, and then demand that the county extend their deadline beyond that date to allow for that to happen?
Correct.
Is that your motion, Karen?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melanie Walters, discussion on this point. If they all have favors, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, that motion is carried, all right. Finance committee recommendations in action, Mr. Ryan Cairns.
Number seven, use of city land for stormwater management for the Lamont subdivision. Jason, since you did such an excellent job during my events, could you give a quick overview of that?
Okay, so we've been working on subdivision, we refer to it as the Lamont subdivision. The council has previously preliminarily allocated about $1.5 million in grant money to go towards the building, the infrastructure for that subdivision. The developer has requested that we bring what you're seeing here tonight, or reviewing here tonight, the question of whether or not we can consider the use of city-owned land for stormwater management that, you know, would be coming from that subdivision or broader other areas in the city. So, or other areas of the city that are in that region, so Allison Park, for example. So at finance, they discussed the motion that was there, that is listed on your cover sheet, and they did pass that motion, and I'm glad to answer any more specific questions, Ryan, if you would like.
That's perfect, my motion will be what is outlined in the packet for council.
Motion for Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
A second.
Second for Ms. Tably, is there discussion?
I have one question, Jason, that I guess we ran out of time on finance. So North Park, is this piece of property just city-owned property, or is it considered like North Park, like a commissioned park?
That's a great, that's a great question, and I honestly do not have the answer. So it is a portion in what we refer to as North Park, it's 2.7 acres that's elevated right now, because the fill that came from creating the retention pond here was placed there. So that space has not been utilized in years, since the fill was placed there, it's just a large grassy plateau. So is it part of the park system? Possibly, has it been used, other than by a casual passerbyer walking from the house up here down to the park? Not that we can tell or that we're aware.
And the ordinance, it labels parks, it designates parks by certain names, and at times it lists approximate acreage, but it doesn't define specific boundaries.
I just didn't know if there was any, if it was considered part of North Park, if there was an additional process we had to go through to make it not part of North Park and just a piece of city-owned property.
I think that there's, the ordinance is not clear for us to answer that question, and so we would have to defer to Attorney Wendell.
Back on the clock. To clarify that statement, I was not billing for the previous discussion, just to get that out there. So the ordinance is poorly defined, I would say that as we move to the actual use of this, if it's determined that that is necessary, it could rise to the level where you want to incorporate a resolution, just clarifying that regardless of whatever the intent was, we no longer consider this parcel to be part of North Park, but at this time, I don't feel like that action is necessary, because we don't know for certain that that has to be used.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Would this retention pond be necessary if we had left the number of lots at a lower number?
Good question, so it is possible to create a subdivision that would support fewer lots, to your point. So right now, it's designed as roughly, conceptually roughly 19 lots and two kind of outlots, but it, we think it's possible that with the reduction in the number of lots, that the stormwater perhaps could be contained on the hillside, and then that stormwater system would have only served that subdivision. It could no longer serve any broader area beyond just that subdivision. So there are lots of design considerations that we haven't been able to get to yet, but I surmise that your question, pointed question is accurate, that if we don't allow stormwater retention on that land, that it would mean that there would be fewer lots developed.
Jason, is that the best use of that 2.7 acres? Is it valuable for anything else?
You know, it's a great question, Ron, we've tossed around different ideas and brainstorming sessions with economic development, talking about, you know, could it be, could it be a tiny home subdivision, or could, you know, what could we do with it? And nothing has really stuck at this point, and if this subdivision moves forward, I believe it is a worthy consideration to use it for this, simply because we would hopefully be achieving the highest density possible for the money that we would be investing. Now again, I'm making that suggestion, but we need to do all the finite calculations so that I'm sure that that statement is accurate, but one could assume, if you use that, it would allow higher density housing up on the hillside.
Any further discussion? Okay, we've got the motion and the second, yeah?
Jason, if that, if that would turn into something usable, then, what would be, would we need a retention pond for that 2.7 acres?
You mean, if we develop something on the 2.7?
Yeah, you said something as far as tiny homes, whatever, whatever, if there was a small subdivision put in there.
Right.
We need to have another place for retention bar.
Correct, so anytime we do any development within the city, stormwater retention and stormwater management has to be factored into the development. So yes, if we did something there, we'd still be going, how do we deal with the water that's gonna be, you know, eliminated from that property? Now where's it gonna go? And do we have the proper drainage swales here, you know, in place so that the water can simply proceed out into the Pine River? Or does the calculation show that we're gonna create more of a wetland issue where the ball fields are? So those are all calculations that would come with any type of development in the area.
Would the pond that's already there, would that be able to absorb any of that from that 2.7 acres?
We are having discussions about the potential of routing some of the stormwater from the above development into the current stormwater management system, which would include that pond, but again, we have not, have not had the opportunity to talk to an engineer at that level of knowing for certain that there, but it would make sense, right? That's a stormwater retention, we've got an elevation above that for housing, so they would look at all options, and I would speculate that they're probably planning on some overground flow that would also make it to that current retention pond.
Okay, so just for example, Mr. Martinig, and this for the public, okay, so Allison Park, okay, I'm there forever, well, here, steep hill, Rainbow Drive, Rainbow Drive Homes, fine, steep hill, houses, put a street in here, which is what's been proposed, and you put houses on either side of that, of course, they're gonna have concrete driveways, et cetera, so you change that landscape, and that water's gonna go someplace, and that someplace is right here. See those houses right there? Bad idea. So to do anything in this wooded area, which is what's been proposed, you're gonna have to have a place where that water will run, and where that water will stay until it disperse. So what this, Mr. Lamont did, he owns this land, and then he bought a lot down in here, I don't remember exactly which lot, this one maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Right there, with the intent of using this lot for water runoff to reach that land, because it could just run downhill into what is essentially a shelf that was created when this pond was dug, was that 30 years ago? Something like that. So the fill that came out of this is what this is. So it's flat, and it's right down the hill using this lot, so that you don't put a street, you can put a bunch of pavement in there, flood these guys out. Okay, that can't be done. So some of the discussion in finance about the engineering that has to happen was about that, and the point of this is to catch water if this is no longer a wooded area that's just ground for water, so it's, makes sense? Got it. Okay, further discussion? Okay, we need a roll call.
Downs. Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Groot.
Aye.
Tably.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Check.
Aye.
Okay, I want you.
Item eight, a resolution adopting updated airport lease and rental fees. Darcy, since you did such a great job in finance.
Okay, so the city currently manages about 17 hanger agreements at the Richland Municipal Airport. Current rates have not been updated in several years, they do not reflect market conditions or operational costs. So we reviewed the existing data and found that several of the agreements are no longer active. I was looking just now, and we only have three that are not lapsed or set for lapse this year. So we are presenting a resolution for your consideration with updated rates, directly a 25% increase across the board, so it did pull up the numbers on the ground leases, so the square footage is 1,100 to 3,800. So we spoke with the DOA and used some comparative data and inflationary trends to come up with these numbers, and we recommended adoption of Resolution 2025-12.
Thank you, my motion to adopt Resolution 2025-12, implementing updated airport lease and rental fees, and authorize the city attorney to prepare updated lease and rental agreements utilizing standardized and authorize the city attorney to prepare updated lease and rental agreements utilizing standardized lease law.
Motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Schultz, before we proceed, I'll read it. City of Richland Center Resolution 2025-12, resolution adopting updated airport lease and rental fees. Two, the rental rate escalator applied to all future years. Rents shall be based primarily on the annual percentage change in the Consumer Price Index. The city may also consider comparable market rental rates for similar municipal airports when setting the annual adjustment. Annual adjustments shall not be less than 0% nor greater than 5%. Three, the foregoing revised fees shall remain in effect until further amended by resolution of the common council. And that's where we're at. So, we have the motion in the second, is there discussion on this point? If not, we'll need a roll call.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tupley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Marcheneck.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
That one's carried.
Thank you. Number nine, the Array U.S. Cellular Land Management Agreement. If you remember, a while ago, we gave Administrator Oliphant and our attorney the authority to negotiate with them to do a lease. Ashley, can you please update us on that?
Absolutely. So, we did receive their best and final offer. They've proposed an annual rent of $14,400, which is $1,200 monthly. This wood expired January 31st, 2051. These are five-year terms with automatic renewals, and the escalator between terms would be based on CPI.
My motion would be to authorize the five-year lease at a rate of $1,200 monthly with four five-year options to extend, including adjustment of CPI.
Motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tupley, is there discussion on this one? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tupley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Marcheneck.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
We've been working on trying to find a good location along with a suitable situation for both the county and the city law enforcement to have our own training range. And like Ron said, one of the big factors behind this is not only the safety of our officers while we do our training, but also a convenience to the public. We talk to the people, you know, people out in the public all the time about we have to close the range in order for us to train. So, we can't train at the same time that other people are using the range for safety reasons, obviously. People travel to our area. We have a vast hunting population, sporting, shooting guns population. So, when we close down that range, it becomes an inconvenience. Some people drive from an hour, two hours away just to use our public range. They show up, we have it closed, becomes an inconvenience, right? We're trying to remedy that. So, we found a location with Ashley, I worked with Ashley, and we found a location up in the dump site that we feel is just a very unique and unused area at this point in time that would benefit us, both the city PD and the Sheriff's Department. And then I worked with Clay to help to develop this MOU. Mr. Wendell, Attorney Wendell looked it over. We feel it's a fitting MOU. I still think there's work to be done on the range site itself, but we're getting there, and this is just one of the steps. And we're just looking for approval from the council to allow myself and Administrator Oliphant to sign it and move it to the county.
Okay. So, where we're at on this, I agree, but at the end of the segment, just that Mexico Public Boozies is one of it. So, you're proposing landfill area?
Correct. Yep, we have a location way at the far end of the landfill that we've looked at. We've kind of exhausted a few other options. We've looked at other locations in the city and in the county and just feel like this is going to be the best fit and be the safest as well.
And I know this has come up in prior years.
Yep.
Trying to find a location.
Yeah, we worked on it for a while.
Mr. Fruit, what action did Public Safety take on this?
We feel it's really important, and I think if you look at the logistics and how officers are trained and lined up when they're using the public range, any individual wanting to do harm to our law enforcement community, they're vulnerable. And so, I think it's incredibly important that we, as a community, move forward with this memorandum of understanding. And I would therefore move that we adopt and designate Administrator Oliphant to be able to sign this along with the other signatures required.
Okay, motion from Mr. Fruit, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
Tupley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Marcheneck.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
That one's carried.
Next item is approval of licenses. These were reviewed by the Public Safety Committee last night, but they were not officially listed on our agenda. So, we simply forward them to you tonight to consider. The first one is submitted by the Richland County Performing Arts Council. Time is of the essence because the Veterans Concert or Salute Concert is coming up this Saturday, November the 9th. This group, of course, has been here many times, and the police chief gives a thumbs up, and the Safety Committee recommends to council. My motion is to approve the license for the Richland County Performing Arts Council for the concert on November 9th at the Richland Center City Auditorium.
Motion from Mr. Fruit, is there a second? What was that?
Second.
Mr. Downs, discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one's carried.
The next one is from Southwest Partners, Doing Business as Richland Rejuvenates. This is a comedy night with Andy Hartley. It is scheduled for November 15th. Again, Public Safety did review this, the police chief has as well. My motion is to approve for Southwest Partners, Richland Rejuvenates, their temporary Class B, Class B retailers license for November 15th.
Motion from Mr. Fruit, is there a second? Second from Mr. Downs, is there discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one is carried.
The third one we have is also from Southwest Partners, Richland Rejuvenates, and this is for the Maggie May Christmas Show that will be presented on December 14th. Again, it is just past the scrutiny, and my motion would be to approve for Southwest Partners, their temporary Class B, Class B retailers license for the Maggie May Christmas Show at the City Auditorium on December 14th.
Motion for Mr. Fruit, is there a second? Second by Mr. Downs, is there discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one is carried.
The final consideration is a peddler's permit for the Tree Right Fruit Company. They have been here before and will do similar on November 24th at the Community Center. Chief Jones did a background check, and we reviewed this and found no concerns. My motion is to approve the peddler's permit for Tree Right Fruit Company to be in Richland Center on November 24th.
Motion for Mr. Fruit, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tupley, is there discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one is carried. Thank you, Mr. Fruit. Okay, next up, Plan Commission Recommendations in Action. Let me introduce two very patient city residents who are at the back. Tracy Connor and his brother Trent. Played baseball at a much higher than level than I did in the late 70s, as I recall. I'm sure they recall. Okay, I met with Tracy and Trent on Tracy's property kind of at the end of Larson Street on Saturday morning, and I know Jason's been up there too. And Tracy purchased it, they've done a bunch of work up there, clear it and get it ready. What it'll be done, will it be a house someday? The decisions aren't made. However, it's landlocked because it's been a wooded area. There's no legal way to access it right now. So, Tracy's going to need an access easement so that he can get to his property. And it's kind of unique, and Jason, I'll let you speak on this in a second. I don't know when Larson Street was put in there. It's old Richland Center, so 19th century, I would assume. And it's up there. I don't even know if I would call it a street. It's kind of a driveway. And there's really just two garages, older ones, one on each side, and now Tracy's property. So, I have no issue with any of this. Jason, you have anything you want to add to it?
No, I think we've used the solution in the past. I mean, I'm highly supportive of Tracy being able to have access to his land. These types of situations do make it difficult potentially in the future for, or allows for the conflict of neighbors in the future because we're creating an easement where it was intended to be a street. But in the current, you know, financial conditions that we're experiencing, does it make sense for the city to put that street in at, you know, $100,000? The answer's probably no. The other consideration is, well, if we're able to grant easement to access to Tracy, he may build something, so that would be a benefit to all constituents as there's more contribution to the tax base. So, we think we've got an agreement outlined by Michael. The kind of terms are discussed in the resolution we're asking for approval on tonight. And we think Tracy, we think we've come to a consensus that it's probably a good place for us to land for now, get Tracy access to that land, and hopefully have some development at some point in the future.
Can we get Tracy the microphone? Welcome, sir. Have you, as we talked on Saturday, but do you have any decisions made yet on the future of the property?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, and I saw, I don't know what it looked like when you got it, but when I was up there Saturday, I could see a lot of work's been done.
Yeah.
What have you done from when you bought it to now?
Just taken some trees down, moved some dirt around, tried to level it up.
I saw that, you know, up there with the Bobcat. You can tell, I don't know what it looked like when you got it, but it's clear now.
Yeah.
Okay, so, no timelines yet, you just know you need access to it.
I just need access to it, yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Connor? All right, well, in that case, at this point, let's see, this one's going to be, this one's going to be resolution as well. Okay, I'll read the resolution. This one's 2025-13. Resolution granting access easement for driveway use within South Larson Street Row. Whereas the City of Richland Center owns a planted but unimproved right-of-way extending south from East South Street, known as the South Larson Street Extension. Whereas Mr. Tracy Connor, owner of parcel number 276-2100-8350, has requested the use of said right-of-way for driveway access to his lot. And whereas the common council of the City of Richland Center finds it appropriate to formalize this use through a reported easement that preserves the city's ownership rights and establishes clear responsibilities for construction and maintenance. Whereas such easements shall include provisions. That one, the easement is perpetual and non-exclusive, and the city retains full ownership and authority over the right-of-way. Two, the grantee shall construct and maintain any private improvements within the easement area at the grantee's sole cost. Three, existing access for adjacent parcels shall be preserved. And four, if the right-of-way is extended or improved to street standards in the future, the benefited property shall be subject to standard assessments for curb gutter payment and related improvements in accordance with the city policy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the City of Richland Center hereby authorizes the granting of a perpetual non-exclusive access easement to Tracy Connor within the city-owned South Larson Street right-of-way. And be it further resolved that the city attorney shall develop an easement agreement to effectuate the terms of this resolution. And be it further resolved that the city administrator is authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the city. And be it further resolved that upon execution, the city clerk treasurer shall record the easement with the Richland County Register of Dees. That is the resolution, and I entertain a motion to approve. Motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second? Second by Mr. Martinick, is there discussion?
How feasible would it be for other people to develop other parts of that area? Like, if we put a street in there, would there be, could there be?
Steve.
Is it feasible that other people would be wanting to put houses in there?
Steve, it's a very steep hill behind his property. It goes like that. There's not going to be, great question. There's no way. It's up a very steep grade, there's not going to be more houses up behind him. Okay, you could never get utilities up there if you did the excavation. Okay? That's a good question. That's a good question.
Good answer.
Wow. All right, further discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Marcheneck. Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tupley.
That one's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next one is a resolution adopting, oh, sorry, one one. Conditional use permit application to allow mobile service facilities and mobile service support structures. Okay, pay attention to these two addresses. Look at them on your agenda, and you'll see why this is a trigger. This one is 25079 Maple Grove Road, which is tax parcel 022-1013200. Okay, this one is simply, there's already an existing cell tower up there, which I believe is a rest cellular. And what they want to do is add on to their tower. I believe I was told T-Mobile was joining. And so, what this was, this came to planning pretty much to just give them consent to do that, which was unanimously recommended to the council for approval. You can see, thanks, guys, you can see on the map where that is. And I'm going to get confused again because the one is the same address. We've got Maple Grove Road and Maple Ridge Road, almost the same house number. Which one is that off of which road?
Grove.
Yes, which is off of?
Was Maple Grove Road off of?
Just make sure.
Fairgrounds.
It's that one, okay, thanks, that's what I thought. So, it's behind the fairgrounds. Heads up to Hustler's. Okay, any questions or comments on this one?
That's a tower that I can see from a chair in my living room. And I watch it now and then, take a look at it, and see if I can see it. If I can't see it, bug out.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, what I'm going to do, I'll entertain a motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow mobile service facilities and mobile service support structures at 25079 Maple Grove Road, tax parcel 022-1013200. Motion by Ellen Walters, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Downs, is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Schultz. Aye. Walters.
Aye.
Marcheneck.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tupley.
Aye.
McCarthy. Aye.
That one's carried. All right, the next one, now notice the similarity here. Conditional use permit application to allow mobile service facilities and mobile service support structures. This one is 2709 Maple Ridge Lane, tax parcel 022-3322-1200.
Is this a side of town?
Yes, it is, and this is going to be 80 South, is that off Crestview, maybe?
Correct.
Okay, so, this is right next to where Kent and Christie had it for several years. So, I know that area a little bit. Okay, again, unanimously recommended, it's the same exact company, same entity. Recommended for approval to the council, so I entertain a motion to approve conditional use permit application to allow mobile service facilities and mobile service support structures at 27095 Maple Ridge Lane, tax parcel 022-3322-1200.
So moved.
Give Rachel that one, we need a second. Standing by Mr. Downs, is there any discussion? All right, we'll need a roll call.
Walters.
Aye.
Marcheneck.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tupley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
That one's carried. Next up, Public Works Committee Recommendation in Action. Mr. Ron Fruit.
Item number 15 is a discussion of the public works snow removal policy. And in my own mind, I think the most important thing here is this is an item that is not needed to address deficiencies with our snow and ice removal in the city. In fact, it's quite the opposite. Our street crew has done an excellent job, so good, in fact, that we, as residents, I think, have unrealistic expectations that the streets should be cleared within minutes after a snowfall occurs. So, the policy, as you can see it in the Agenda Item Data Sheet, is intended to provide internal consistency, clarify service expectations, and formalize winter operations in response to varying weather conditions. As we discussed in Public Works, it also provides a framework for we, as members of Richland Center City Council, to be able to address citizen concerns who may think that there are
their drive should have been plowed or their street should have been taken care of, we have something to refer to. I think Darcy and Jason have done a nice job of working on this and are looking for input. Darcy, is there anything that you would like to add to that?
Sure. The only thing I would note is that we have pivoted from this being a policy to it being a procedure, so that it's more fluid in the case that we would need to make changes for any reason. So that has been updated in the actual draft, and we're open to any questions or input as you see fit.
Discussion. So this one is here simply as a report, we're not asking for any action by the council tonight, right? Was there any discussion? Go ahead, Tom, did you have something? Okay. Steve?
Yeah, as a school bus driver, I was wondering if they could downgrade the priority of the schools, I'd kind of like to have snow days more.
Just for the purpose of the meeting minutes, I guess the main point is that the expectation would be that within 24 hours of snowfall, that the snow would be cleared, but it will not, snow removal would not be initiated until it accumulates to the point of two inches, is that correct?
It's, again, that's why we went with the procedure versus a policy because it's approximate, depends on the weight of the snow, how much moisture's in it, you know, so approximately, yes.
Okay, for the discussion? Okay, thank you, Ron.
Item number 16 then is an ordinance amending Chapter 101 relating to the authorization of stop signs on North Congress Street. A city resident recently attended, it was the October Public Safety Meeting, to request consideration of stop signs on Congress Street to address safety concerns. The resident was particularly concerned with the well-being of children in the area. We agreed at that meeting that Chief Jones would inspect the area and if warranted, the matter would be referred to Public Works. Chief Jones did conclude that there was merit, and the city has available signs, meaning there's minimal financial impact. And if you're wondering if there's been an accident in that area being addressed on Congress Street, there has not been an accident, and to quote Police Chief Jones, "We don't want any." And so we feel that that's appropriate, and in fact, if there are some stop signs there, and maybe even the possibility of some yield signs coming forward in a future discussion, that maybe traffic can be routed more up toward Orange Street, where we would desire that traffic to be as opposed on Congress. So my motion would be to adopt ordinance number 2025-09, an ordinance amending Chapter 101 of the municipal code of the city of Richland Center relating to authorization of stop signs on North Congress Street at its intersection with Second Street and Fourth Street.
Before we entertain, we have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, hold right there, I'll read this one. Ordinance number 2025-09. An ordinance amending Chapter 101 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Richland Center relating to authorization of stop signs on North Congress Street at its intersection with Second Street and Fourth Street, whereas the common council finds that the installation of additional stop signs on North Congress Street will improve public safety, traffic regulation, and neighborhood accessibility, enhancing visibility, and reducing potential conflicts at key intersections. And whereas the Public Safety Committee has reviewed and recommended approval of the proposed stop sign locations, now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Richland Center, Richland County, Wisconsin, as follows. Section 1, Subparagraph 101.041, SSSS of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Richland Center relating to placement of additional stop signs is created to read. SSSS on North Congress Street at its intersection with Second Street and Fourth Streets. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law. We have the motion, and second is there discussion?
Yeah, just wanted to maybe bring up a point. I believe there are stop signs on every corner on Church Street, or is it on?
Central Avenue.
Central? It's one of the two, Church Street.
It's central.
It's central. Okay, so by putting stop signs on every corner on that street, many people just avoid that street and then they go over. So I don't know if that pertains to this area. I live on Park Street, and when all the stop signs went up on every corner on Park Street, I have hardly any traffic on the corner of Park in Hazeltime. They moved, well, primarily to Saxonville Road. The only traffic I ever see on my street is people that live on my block. So I don't know if that's, you know, something I think of as, you know, either move through this situation or any others of, you know, if you remove some of those stop signs, you might allow more traffic on that street and you won't have as much on the other.
In this case, it's, in my opinion on that one, either Main Street or Orange Street, having more traffic on either one of them brings additional benefit to the city because, trust me, when we try to recruit businesses, they want traffic count. We want them, when we can get them on the highway. And we're just uniquely positioned in that neighborhood, that we have a highway on either side of this or near it. And I'm just, in that case, that would be my advice, but I get what you're saying over by your house, which is a little bit different. It's not a highway.
Well, Saxonville, you know, still, you know, was the old line.
Used to be.
And so there's just more traffic there.
And keep in mind, on Congress Street now, there are no stop signs. So it is a straight shot from the Phoenix Center up to Sixth Street, and so those stop signs in place would make a difference.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Martinak.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
That one's carried.
Next item is number 17, an ordinance amending Chapter 391 relating to permits required for temporary use of public right-of-way. We currently have a dumpster permit, but construction certainly is a lot more than a dumpster. Jason, let me defer to you, but I think the title of a temporary use of public right-of-way permit makes a lot of sense.
Yep, and I'm going to defer to Darcy because she's done most of the work on it.
Okay, so currently we require a dumpster permit for placing of dumpsters within the public right-of-way. The existing ordinance is limited in scope and does not adequately address other common right-of-way obstructions such as scaffolding, construction equipment, or filthy materials. So to improve clarity, compliance, and public safety, we recommend amending Chapter 391 to transition from a dumpster permit to a temporary use of the public right-of-way permit, applicable to a broader range of temporary uses of the right-of-way. We have done some research on this, and it is common in other communities that they have adopted a similar structure, and we think that it will just improve clarity in the community and provide a more straightforward process. So our motion would be to adopt ordinance number 2025-10, an ordinance amending Chapter 391 of the municipal code of the city of Richland Center relating to permits required for temporary use of the public right-of-way.
We'll entertain that motion.
That would be my motion, Mayor.
Motion for Mr. Fruit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs? Okay, now, I, as I typically do, I'm more than willing to read this. It is front and back, I will read it if that is the motion, and if not, the motion needs to be amended to suspend the rules, waive the reading.
May I amend my own motion?
You may.
I would amend my motion then to suspend the rules and waive the reading.
Second?
Second.
Okay. In that case, it's open for discussion if there is any.
I think this also is a good safety step forward.
Oh, so do I. That's good. Okay, any further discussion? All right, we'll need a roll call.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Martinak.
Aye.
That one's carried. All right, that puts us to appointments, the committee commissioners boards are confirmed. I have none tonight, next is public comment, I have one for him, some gentleman named Rod Perry, who I believe is out there somewhere.
Yes, he is. I just preface this.
Thank you, sir.
I just preface this with some background. The summer of '24, my wife and a neighbor woman registered a complaint with the local authorities regarding a particular vehicle that was traveling on our street in a manner we didn't care for. And that very day or evening, that individual knew who had reported him because he liked strips by our houses and he's been making noise as he goes by for a year and a half. So I sat down at my computer in August, and this was the result. There ain't no law on Hazeltime when it comes to traffic fines. The cars go fast and so the trucks, the drivers all save lots of bucks. They don't have to pay the fines because there ain't no law in Hazeltime. Squads are up and on the scene on Orange and Interstate 14, but they miss the running of stop signs on streets that cross Old Hazeltime. Of course, we all enjoy the noise as furnished by those good old boys who hot rod up and down the line because there ain't no law on Hazeltime. Now my future is a cinch, I'm the one they'll probably pinch for grousing about the traffic crime that's rampant here on Hazeltime. We've lived here 50 years and more and not seen speeding so galore. Come on over and speed sometime because there ain't no law on Hazeltime.
I live on Maple Grove Road, it's true, but the cops can't be everywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Carried. Okay, next up is closed session for the purpose of discussing reach of contract and legal options related to panorama states, their motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
That's Cairns, her second. Steve, all in favor of entering closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're now in closed session.